I'm Chris Montero, I'm the president of the Cambridge Education Association. And welcome to the public, including caregivers and educators and students of Cambridge, as well as the candidates who have joined us here tonight. This is the second CEA School Committee Candidate Forum, and we are excited to host this opportunity to engage in active democracy. It's important to have these community events because we often see democratic norms and participation under attack these days, especially from public officials. By being here, we are all showing that this kind of democratic engagement still matters and that people care about their public schools. So, thank you for being here. To start, each candidate will take one minute to introduce themselves. Then, we have prepared some questions from the CEA membership. Candidates, you will need to hold your responses to a minute unless otherwise noted. We are going to let you know when you have used up 45 seconds and have 15 seconds left. April is going to give you a wave. And then, when you've hit your 60 seconds, full minute, you're going to get one of these from April. And then, if you keep going after that, then you've got to deal with me or Sarah Orjol. So, please try to keep it down, that way we can get to all of the questions we have. Also, a note that not all candidates will answer all questions. So, we will clarify before we read the questions who it's directed to. Towards the end of the program, we will take questions from the audience. Audience, we are going to circulate with index cards and pens throughout the program. So, if you have questions that you want to ask, you can jot them down. And then, you can just raise that index card up, and our folks will come by to grab it from you. And then, we will have closing statements of about a minute. So, that's it for the intro. Again, welcome to everybody who is just coming in. And we are going to go ahead and get started with our first question. And I'm going to go ahead and direct it. It's going to be to everyone, and again, you have one minute to answer this question. "How will you ensure that families with disproportionate influence do not drown out the needs of underrepresented..." Oh, yeah. I just said we were going to do opening statements. Thank you, guys. That was a test, and you all passed. A+. We will start with opening statements of one minute each, beginning with member Weinstein.
Great, thank you. All right. Hi, I'm David Weinstein. I ask you for your number-one vote to reelect me to build on what I've accomplished. I've lived in Cambridge for 24 years, and I'm a proud Cambridge Public Schools parent of an eighth grader and a 2025 CRLS graduate. My commitment to education begins with my own public school experience. I did well academically, loved my teachers, made lifelong friends, things that I wish for every child. But I could see disparities and opportunity in my diverse hometown. I became a teacher. I taught in public elementary and high schools, in special education summer camp, in the School for the Deaf, and I've spent my career in K-12 and college education. I researched teacher leadership and policy at the Harvard Grad School of Education, and I've guided and grown a 50-state civic education program based at Brandeis University. I know how to connect innovations and ideals with classroom and community realities. We have so much in Cambridge: incredible children, dedicated and talented teachers and staff, wonderful families, innovative city programs, community partners, and a strong budget. We do so much so well, yet some children still fall through the cracks and disparities persist. My service on the school committee has been dedicated to solving this contradiction. I'm proud of the Cambridge Schools, but not satisfied.
Hi, everybody. Oh, I'm not going to talk about me because I don't matter. What matters is that we can deliver for you. And to that end... Oh, hi, I'm Elizabeth Hudson. Sorry, I should have said that. Yeah, that was an important point of view, important detail. So, I'm Elizabeth Hudson. I'm not going to talk about myself, because you could read about me elsewhere. But I'm going to talk about how we deliver for you. First point is that I don't play fast and loose with budget numbers or policy details. The budget is a public document, by the way, and everybody has these numbers available now. So, when we talk about this evening, things like paraprofessional pay or whether or not schools are fully funded, ask people for specific details. Ask what those numbers actually are, and ask how they'll actually pay for them. Those are details that they should have available. And I also have a spine. You can get elected with nice words, but you can't... Educators can't pay for their homes with nice words. You know, when we talk about things like school buses and paraprofessional pay, you know, who here is saying both that we can have electric school buses and we could raise paraprofessional pay to $50,000? Because those two groups that they're talking to aren't often in the same room. It takes guts in order to be able to tell people what are your strict priorities and how you will order them. Bottom line, this isn't a vanity project. I'm here to deliver and here to get results, even if it means disappointing some people.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Caitlin Dubey, and I'm a CPS parent, a former classroom teacher, and an equity-driven school designer. Thank you so much to the CEA for hosting this forum. I'm looking forward to having important conversations tonight about how we can support teachers, close opportunity gaps, and make sure that we have schools where every student can thrive. I'm running for school committee because I truly believe we can have the best schools in the world right here in Cambridge. We have everything we need to do that. We have incredible educators, bright, diverse, creative students, and incredible resources. We need to use those resources wisely. We need to make sure that students have what they need, that we're deploying best practices across the city, and that we're using city wraparound services to support students so that everybody has what they need to thrive. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jess Gutz. My strongest connection to our public schools is through my two children, who have been in public schools since kindergarten and are now students at Darby Vassal Upper School. I'm a hard worker with the humility to know when I don't know the answers and the research experience to find out. I believe this school is about so much more than assessments and potential future earning. I grew up in an environment where my school was my community, and that is a mindset that I have taken forth into my children's education. As long as they have been in Cambridge Public Schools, I have been involved in their school. And that led to following school committee and now running for school committee. I'm running for school committee because I want to be a part of making it more effective and more in line with what's happening in our schools. In my experience, the school committee is not particularly accessible, accountable, responsive, transparent, or even curious about what's happening in the daily lives of our schools. And I think it's time for that to change.
Thank you.
Hi, everyone. I'm Arjun Jakumar. I'm running because I believe public education is a public good. In 1968, my father came from India to Stillwater, Oklahoma, to attend a public university. 12 years later, he came here to Cambridge to teach at Harvard. My family lived the American dream because of our national commitment to offering quality public education to all students, including students of color, including students from non-traditional backgrounds, and including students from other countries. And today, those values are under attack from our own federal government. In this moment, at this time, I think Cambridge needs to recommit the bold, progressive, and inclusive leadership, both in our schools and in our city government. We need to recommit to the principles in the Building Equity Bridges framework, to treat educators as experts and caregivers as partners, to build the future for our kids that every one of our kids deserves.
Hello, my name is Alex Bowers. Thank you for having me here and for hosting this forum. I'm Alex Bowers, and I am the mother of twin girls who are sophomores at CRLS. They attended MLK, PAWS, the Community Charter School of Cambridge, and now they're in the high school. You also might recognize my name. I wrote for Cambridge Day for about over five years about the education system in the city. By profession, I'm a technical writer and editor, so communications is one of my strengths. And what I am... Why I am running is that I believe that we can make Cambridge a more welcoming and effective place to raise and educate our children by improving our school system. So, thank you.
Hi, everyone. I'm Lily Hafsted. I'm a parent to a third grader at Graham &amp; Parks and a six-month-old baby who will be entering our CPP program in however many years. I am a college educator. I'm at Harvard. I'm a visiting scholar in the Center for African Studies. Previously, I taught in history and literature. Shout out to two of my campaign team members, who are undergraduate students in history and literature. I love working with young people, and I receive the young people on the other end of this journey, their K-12 journey. And so, I see a lot of what students are bringing with them and where we can shore up their K-12 educational experiences if they are on the college track. I'm a historian by training. I'm committed to engaged teaching and learning. And I am fighting to make CPSD a more human-centered district from the classroom to central office. And I just also want to note that today I received the news that I have been endorsed by UAW, the Massachusetts CAP Region 9 organization. Thank you.
Hi there. I'm Louisa de Paula Santos. I worked for the last two years as a paraprofessional at the Fletcher Maynard Academy, which is now the highest-needs school in the district. I'm currently working as a paraprofessional in Somerville. I have a graduate degree in urban policy and planning, where I focused on making city planning processes more participatory and democratic. And I've been to a lot of school committee meetings as an active CEA member for our contract campaign, and really felt like that bridge there between the school committee and the community, the students, could be a lot stronger. I feel like I have the background and the personal connections to be able to make that happen, and I really care about our students. Thank you.
12 years ago, I sat in a meeting about my child and realized the system saw them as a number, not a person. I have postdoctoral training and I'm a lifelong learner, but nothing prepared me for that moment. That experience pushed me into advocacy. Since then, I've organized family events and programs that support kids' mental wellbeing. I've learned that when schools work for our most vulnerable learners, they work better for all learners. And that means supporting those who support our children, our teachers, who spend at least six to eight hours a day with kids in the classroom. Teachers deserve respect, autonomy, and real resources. Because when teachers thrive, students and families thrive too. I'm Judging Lee. I started this journey as a parent in an IEP meeting. And I'm running so no family or teacher has to not be heard, to feel unheard. Thank you.
My name is Jane Hershey. I'm the parent of two daughters who went through Cambridge Public Schools from special start, both graduating from CRLS. I work in the nonprofit sector. I'm currently working as an interim executive director, working with small-to-medium-sized nonprofits that are going through leadership change. My current engagement is in Roslindale. But I would say equally salient to my two daughters being in school, I have sometimes we call the third child in our family City Sprouts, a school garden program that I founded 25 years ago with a group of educators, a principal, two teachers, and a couple of parents. City Sprouts is a nature-based science program in the elementary schools. And no longer with City Sprouts, but running because I miss our schools. I love them, and I'm eager to make them stronger.
Hey there. My name's Ann Coburn. Sometimes people call me Annie. I am looking for your number-one vote as I seek to serve on the school committee. I am a producer, writer, and media maker. My work often focuses on social justice issues. My personal story is only important here because our story of transitions and disabilities is one that a lot of other families share. I am originally from Ohio, but I lived in New York City for most of my adult life until the summer of 2019. That's when we discovered that our then-kindergartner had dyslexia and that her new IEP was deeply inadequate. But we couldn't afford the tuition or the legal fees that it would take to get her what she needed. So, when we had the opportunity to move, we took it. We landed here in September 2019 and enrolled our girl at Kennedy Longfellow. And I will never forget my relief after realizing that that school had everything that she needed to thrive. But over time, I also noticed that Kelo was disproportionately affected by enrollment fluctuations and budget disparities. The building's HVAC was inadequate, and there were rats.
Ann, can we start to wrap it up? Thank you.
Yeah, you got it. So, after I noticed that these experiences did not line up with the district and the school committee's near-constant use of the word equity, I served on... And Kelo closed. I served on the steering committee. And I learned so much more about the Kelo teachers' working experiences and their conditions and their profound grace under fire.
Ms. Coburn, it's been well over 60 seconds.
Yes, sir. Thank you for the time.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Eugenia Schraha. That's Eugenia, like Eugene, and Schraha rhymes with algebra. I'm a former public high school teacher. I taught in the Bronx, and I have two kids in our schools. Besides being a classroom teacher, one thing that distinguishes me in this race is my advocacy track record. A few people mentioned wraparound services, and one thing I did was work to pass the Affordable Housing Overlay, which allows Cambridge to build fully affordable buildings. And in my role as Director of Constituent Services for the mayor, I was able to see three of my homeless constituents be housed thanks to one of these projects not long ago. I also successfully advocated for 170 additional after-school seats and to raise after-school teacher pay. As a candidate, I write a weekly newsletter that is already influencing policy. Local media has taken up two of my stories, one on the superintendent search and one on troubling data at Fletcher Maynard School. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Laquion Arlene Battle. First of all, I want to thank CEA, the Cambridge Education Association, for hosting this forum tonight. And also, I want to thank you for all of the safety and the guidance of all the participants here tonight according to what's lately been happening in our news. Again, thank you for all the participants coming out tonight. God bless you all. My name's Laquion Battle. I'm originally from Fort Worth, Texas. I am a birth mother. I have a 14-year-old son who runs a charity for kids with autism and kids with disabilities. I'm grateful for my aunt stepping in to care for him. I'm also very grateful for all of the birth mothers, all of the foster mothers, the foster parents, the teachers, the coworkers, everybody that has stepped in to cater to that child's life. No matter who you are, no matter what you're in that child's life, I'm very thankful that you are in that child's life. Even though I cannot be with my son at this moment, I'm very thankful that he does have the support and the help that he needs. I'm also a graduate of Purdue University, cum laude. And I came here to Massachusetts in 2018, 2019 on search for a job with Black Lives Matter. And I was able to transition over to Harvard University, where I worked as a medical assistant passing out COVID test kits.
Laquion, can we start to wrap it up?
Yes. I'm able to volunteer, pass out any donations to any of the schools here in the Cambridge School District. And I'm also available to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you so much, and God bless you.
Hi, I'm Richard Harding, a member of the school committee, a public health professional. I work here at our public health department. Today is actually my 24th year. It's my anniversary. And I'm the manager of Bi-Park Men's Health and Community Engagement. I also civically volunteer as the vice president of the Cambridge NAACP, as well as being the owner of two small businesses. My daughter Ciara graduated from CRLS in the class of 15 and went on to do great things. I would just say that I'm running because I think that I want to have a renewed focus on teacher evaluation and support for kids in the classroom, as well as making sure that we're doing all we can to make sure that our RISTA program is successful. I championed algebra. I've championed many of the other accountability systems that the school committee has under its purview, and I look forward to speaking with you tonight.
Thank you, candidates. You can put it on the table. So, you kind of got a preview of the first question from Chris a little while ago? So, you've been thinking about it this whole time?
Thank you, Chris.
So, the question from CEA is, "How will you ensure that families with disproportionate influence do not drown out the needs of underrepresented communities here in Cambridge?" And we're going to allow... Why don't we start with you, Mr. Harding? And we'll go that way, one minute for everybody.
Yeah, thanks for the question. I think for me, it's never about the influence or not that a family has with that kid. It's really about what makes sense within our public school system. I'm happy with people who come from all different walks and different difficulties and have different life experiences. But at the end of the day, I think it's important that the student can take seriously all the issues that its constituent brings up and make sure that we do the best we can to make sure that all students and families get what they need. Most importantly, what I would like to do is really think about who's not in the room most of the time. It is true that when we sit at the school committee, there's a lot of people who come back time and time again and be irritated, sometimes good ideas, but also they're very accustomed to the public comment section. I think that the school committee can do a better job. And I've said this a couple years ago, by going into each school committee and really having a safe place where people feel that they can be heard.
Thank you. You should be on. Is it not? Flip the switch?
It's loud, I'm sorry.
Yeah. And just a reminder that April right here is our timekeeper. And when she gives you this, that's 45 seconds in.
Okay. Thank you so much. There are many wonderful newsletters out there. There are so many websites out there. There are so many ways that parents have an influence. Lately, as of the past two months, there has been less of a participation in the school board meetings. If I would encourage the parents and the community to come to the school board meetings, we need your input, we need your say-so. As well as for myself, I've also been an ISS teacher at Franklin Elementary School in Newton, Massachusetts. And you could just imagine the input that a parent needs from the teacher, even from an assistant aide, to see exactly what their student child needs in that particular class. So, I would encourage you guys to please come to the school board meetings, email your teachers, call your principals, and let them know how you feel about the services.
Hi, so yeah, I'm Eugenia. So, I was a former high school teacher, and I do think that the most important thing is to be in close contact. Your ideal person would be to talk to the student a few years after they've graduated and ask what they want. But we can't do that because they're not there yet. So, I want to hear from the students, what they want about their school. And I want to hear from the families, what they want for their child. And I want to hear from the teachers, how they think that things are going. And those three voices are not... It will be a common refrain, they're not listened to enough yet. But there is... I have a concern that there is this thing called the CPS Parent List Serve. It's outside of the school system. And it's really mostly wealthy, well-to-do parents who are very abstract most of the time in their concerns. And I think that that contrast with what you hear from actual people, that they just want their student to thrive. I've been struck at the doors in all places, whether subsidized housing or well-to-do places, that people agree that what we need is for all students to be challenged and that all kids who are not up to grade level should get all the support that they need. But that's not what you hear on that list. Thank you, Eugenia. Sorry to go on.
It's okay. Hi. Regarding disproportionate influence, I think that there's a problem here with our district in that there aren't good mechanisms to exchange that kind of information that parents, that caregivers, that the community would like to give the school committee and ensure that they've been heard. So, I'd really like to see the entire school committee have scheduled regular office hours that they're at, that people know when and where to expect them, that they can be available. I'd love to see town halls where the school committee and where the community can actually have a give-and-take kind of conversation. I think it's really important to be able to have those methods, those like expected methods of exchange. I'd love to see translators at every single school committee meeting. I would also really... I completely agree with Mr. Harding about having the school committee go into the schools, maybe around Robin. Could there be somebody there at a different school every single month? This is too big of a burden to share alone.
Thank you, Ann.
And I'd like to hear what Jane Hershey said.
So, I would... I guess I want to start by saying I think every parent's voice... Every parent has the right to voice an opinion. And my thought is it's less about reducing the voice of certain parents and raising up the voices that we're not hearing from. And I think that needs to be done in both formal and informal ways. Formal ways of going to places to hear from parents. Informally, I think the school committee, school committee members have a responsibility to hear those voices outside of those formal places as well, to be part of communities, various communities, and hearing those parents' concerns. But also making sure that those families, those parents and caregivers, know that we want to hear from them.
First of all, family engagement is the key in getting the students' needs met, every student's. So, while we cannot tell some families not to be so loud, we should encourage those who are not speaking out by cultivating a culture from in the district, within the district, from top to bottom. That means, as school committee members, they should always be very approachable, having regular office hours, and also formal and informal dialogues, ongoing dialogues. That's the first thing. Secondly, we also need to do practice that within the school, in our children's school, from the principal, the administrative self, to the teachers, constantly trying to be proactively reaching out to the families, even though some families are quiet or not responsive. But we should do that. That's the first part on our side. And then, we also need to have educational awareness for these families, who are usually very quiet. Tell them that family engagement is the key for them, for their children, to be successful. And I know there are organizations such as CFAT, who is doing this.
Jane, thank you for your comment.
Influence comes from knowledge. Knowledge is power. True engagement, I think, requires transferring power, not just soliciting input. As some people have said, I really do believe in holding office hours and going to people who are not coming to the meetings, even if it means going door-to-door, hosting meetings at different buildings, doing block parties even, so people can be in their neighborhood speaking to us. I think that's very important. I think also with the CEA Solidarity Squad, we held a People's School Budget Process. That town hall was extremely effective. I think with even more outreach to different parent groups, I think we could really get a lot from that. And I feel that going from listening to action is very important. Simply hearing concerns is not that great if there's not action. So, I would vow to use my qualitative research-analysis skills to find actionable commonalities among every credible issue.
Thank you.
Yeah, so I've heard a lot of great responses already, and I kind of want to pick up on Xie Jing's point about dialogue and Jane's point about making sure that we aren't trying to reduce anyone's voices, but trying to lift up the voices that are not being heard, that aren't at the table. And so, I echo what everyone has said about taking meetings to neighborhoods, to schools, different types of family engagement. I know that we've started this year to do some of that. I think in part due to the activism of the Solidarity Squad, of which I'm also a member, as well as the Cambridge Families of Color Coalition, which has advocated for the new Caregiver Academy at the high school. So, important small steps this year going ahead. But there's a lot more to do. And I think that building dialogue, not just between educators and families and students, but also between families, so that families can better... students, but also between families, so that families can better understand the different challenges that they and their kids are facing in the school system. And then maybe we can be a little less combative over the shortage of resources, and instead better distribute them.
I think what I would like to see is, there are already structures within, in place within Cambridge that could be used better and more effectively to help people have conversations. The school councils, I think, have been largely ignored, and they are a real place where people, both teachers, educators, and administrators can get together and talk about the issues that affect their particular school committee, school community. Also, friends groups can be very influential in getting people together. Some of them are underfunded, and maybe the district can help, well, provide more funds to help them stage events to bring communities together. For instance, when my kids were in elementary school, the annual potluck was huge, and you had people bringing, you know, dishes from their individual countries or their heritages and sharing them, and it was fantastic. Another thing is, is that I know that according to the meeting on September 2 of the school committee, there's a big push now on family engagement, and that both parents and educators were sent to a summer session. I think it's the MAP initiative. And Alex, we're going to have to wrap it up. And I'm done. Sorry.
So I think things like office hours, responding to emails, those things are very important, and I believe in them, and we should all do them. But I think if you make yourself available, you are always going to get a self-selected population of the people who want to engage with you. And we need to be proactive about interacting with communities that don't trust us, that don't feel represented, or don't know the resources that are available for them. So I think we have to, as others have said, proactively go to each school community. Talk to educators, talk to caregivers there, listen as much as you talk, build trust, and be humble. I think that's the only way, really, to engage fully with communities that have historically been underrepresented. Again, as Jane said, I don't believe in, you know, shutting out or ignoring the voices of people that want to engage. I think that's just as important. But if the question is how to bring people into the process who have historically not been a part of it, I think being proactive and being physically present in a school community is the only way.
Well, it's a real advantage going after all these smart people. My campaign has been primarily focused on questions like this about process. I don't know anybody, if anybody here has recently made a comment at a school committee meeting, but I find it very intimidating, and I am a well-educated native English speaker. So I think one of the first things we could do is really try to cultivate an environment where people feel safe and heard in those meetings, in their schools, at their school councils, within their friends groups. I also think that school committee members have an obligation to be responsive to the community members who reach out to them, not just the loudest ones, not just the squeaky wheel getting the grease, but everybody who reaches out to you needs to be heard.
I think we've heard a lot of amazing ideas tonight, and I want to echo a focus on hyper-local relationship-driven, authentic family engagement. When we think about school councils as an opportunity to truly engage with all of the families, we also know that school councils are places where caregivers can be elected, even if they're non-citizens. So when we think about who can really be involved, school councils are the places where that's happening. I also think, as Luisa said, influence is about knowledge, it's also about access. So how are we democratizing access, both to information and to people? That starts through actually using Karen MAPS framework to build dual capacity in teachers and parents, to allow that relationship to flourish, and we need to make sure that we're compensating educators for the additional time that that will take to make phone calls, to do text outreach, to attend events. We also need to think about funding events for families, so that if caregivers want to attend, there is childcare, there is food, there are stipends for that type of involvement. If we actually want authentic family engagement, we need to think about how we're democratizing that process and then really build that out.
Thank you. I think this is a great question. I think the first point that I want to make is that you don't have to look like somebody in order to represent them, but you do have to understand them. This means not only being reachable, but as many people have already pointed out, also reaching out to people. And we talk about events, you know, right now, we have events where we have childcare, we have food, we have translators. They're still poorly attended. It's better understanding why they're poorly attended, what we're missing, and what else we could be doing. It's also then having the guts to act upon what you learn, right? Power isn't just city leadership, it's also your peers. You know, vote for people who have the guts to say no, even, not only to their opponents, right, but also to their supporters, right? Because that's the, that's the hard part, right? And you're going, you're going to need it. So look for litmus tests. Are you willing to share information, even when it's bad information? Do you stand up to people, you know, do you stand up to even your core constituency? Again, these are the skills that you need in order to properly represent underrepresented populations, which is not just hearing what they need, but also being able to act on what they need and deliver what they need. At the end of the day, if you hear it and you don't deliver, it's done nothing.
So addressing inequities and who is heard and how that's, how that's handled, it's both structure and policy, and it's personal. Several mentioned the Karen MAP dual-capacity framework. It's something that I've had some opportunity to learn about and carry with me regularly. I think we need to also recommit to addressing the building equity bridges, barriers to equity. I think we've done that in some ways, but I think we really need a full press to really reassess where we're at and what we need to do next. And I think we also need, what I've been advocating for is a really comprehensive system in which every child has a navigator, so we know their needs, we know their opportunities, we know their strengths and can address them. And that's a very proactive piece. Personally, I championed the work of our school councils, and I thank Alex for the work that she, that she did on this, and really made sure we passed a new policy handbook. And then, I advocated for and set up a special subcommittee so that we could hear from parents and caregivers at individual schools to better understand what's going on. And then, I, on another personal level, I reach out and attend events and talk with parents, students, educators, organize groups like CPEC, CSCC, CALA, MBK, and Individuals, and I'm present in the schools. And if you call me, we find a time around your schedule. Thank you.
Thank you. Just a quick note, we are five minutes ahead of schedule. I can't believe I'm saying that. I also know it, a minute is a short amount of time, and that will mean that we will have more time for audience questions, so we're going to stick with it. This next question is only for Jane Hershey, Judging Lee, Luisa de Palo Santos, and Jessica Getz, so if you want to, if the four of you want to grab a mic. And the question is as follows. If, and you have a minute each. If the superintendent and city manager presents you with a budget that doesn't fully fund schools, what would you do? You can start, Jess.
I get to start? That's exciting. Well, obviously, that's a problem. I guess what we have to do is advocate. We have to mobilize. We have to get parents to understand why we're not fully funding the schools. We have to get the CEA on board, we have to reach out to the community. You know, there are a lot of people in Cambridge who don't have kids in the system, and they should still care about the system. So I think the big answer is, if the city manager sends us a bottom-line number, and then we have to build the budget from that, and that doesn't cover it, we have to go back and ask for more money. I mean, I've heard people on this stage talk about how our city is under-leveraged. Now, I'm not a tax specialist, but I am a homeowner, and I would pay higher taxes for our schools.
Is this on? Hello. Yeah, totally agree. It's a huge problem. Agree that advocacy is key, and also making connections. I would definitely build on relationships with city council members. I agree with what Jess said, that we can ask for more money. The city has a lot of discretionary funding that it is not using. Cambridge is one of the wealthiest cities in the world. And also, we are not taxing commercial residential buildings as much as Boston is. So if we did need more money, there are places where that can come from. I feel like it's a matter of political will to not have fully-funded schools. Austerity is a choice. There's no reason why our students should not have the resources that they need.
So usually, when we say we are tight in money, there are two ways. One, make more money. Second, cut some money. But we don't cut for kids. So what we can do is, first, we get extra, we advocate, and we also get extra resources. We have fantastic institutions locally. We can partner with them and see what we can do to make up those funds and make up some, some of the programs. And also, we, I'm not sure about raising the real estate tax, because that's probably, legally, we're not able to do that if you look into the law. But we can try, but we can definitely ask the big companies here, biotechs and farmers, to contribute their part. And then, of course, we can look into the area where, how we can be more efficient to maximize the money we have in our budget. And third, community engagement. We have very talented people in our community, like yourself, and who may be too shy to identify yourself, and we can have great ideas from you. Thank you.
So I think these are great strategies, once we've agreed that there's not enough money to fund our schools. But I would say, so show me where, show me where this, this funding is not supporting our schools. I think when you have the responsibility to look at a budget, you have that responsibility to look at the details of it. So I know the question assumes that we're both on the same page, that there's not enough, but I would say, let's look at those details. In what way is this budget not funding our schools? If we come to an agreement, it's truly not, we've got a lot, we've got something to work with, we've got some argument to take to the city council, to, or the city manager, to increase that. But I don't think that it's just an automatic asking for more. I think there's a responsibility on the school committee to look at those details.
Thank you. Sarah has the next question for you guys.
It's not for me, it's for some of you. This one's for Eugenia and Lizzie, Caitlin and Arjun. In your opinion, and what is your belief about what the role of the CEA, the Cambridge Education Association, is in decision-making in the district? Does anybody want to volunteer to go first? Okay.
Thank you for this question, because I think it's a really important one. As a former teacher and a person who currently works in education, I know that there is no more important voice at the table than the voice of teachers and educators. When everything we do as a district is student-centered, that means that teachers' voices have to be at the table. I think having a collaborative stance with educators is only a positive thing. When we co-create policies together, we know that those policies are supported by teachers from the outset, and we also get feedback on how those policies are working. I think the CEA is our best opportunity to truly also enact authentic family engagement. So if we're looking to democratize outcomes across the district, if we're actually looking to leverage all of the abundant resources that we have in the city, then we need to have educators as co-creators at the table from that set.
All right. I'm going to answer this question, and I'm going to talk really fast, because then I also want to answer the previous question. The CEA's role in decision-making is inherent. You're the final and most important step in the implementation, and you're the experts in the implementation, right? The community can weigh in on what skills we want and how we want to see them assessed and what those standards should be, but you know how to implement it, and you know, you know what those assessments should look like. You know, practically, how do you ensure this? You, you know, one of the questionnaires asked about a seat at meetings. Great, like come be part of the conversation. Deliberations may be another story, but being a part of the conversation, that's what I want to see. We talk a lot about ed research. I place very little, very little faith in ed research. I place enormous faith in the lived experience of the brain trust that's gathered here. But I'm going to take the remainder of my time and talk about the budget. The budget is 30% of the school committee's job. Nice words are 0% of the school committee's job. There's absolutely no excuse for not knowing what fully-funded means today, and then knowing, if you want to expand the budget, how do you go and do that? Free cash does not mean cash that's sitting around, right? The city has any number of unfunded mandates that are sitting around, waiting for that cash as well. Know what those are, know what your argument's going to be, know how to go and make that argument. When you talk about making more money, talk about the city being under-leveraged. Know those details, because people cannot pay their mortgages with platitudes. They need details, and that is a full third of the job.
Thank you.
I think the role of the CEA and its members in policymaking is critical. As Lizzie said, educators are experts in the classroom. Educators and caregivers are the adults closest to our kids, and educators are the only ones who are in classes. So for one thing, I would support a non-voting membership for the CEA on the school committee. We have management at the table every meeting, and we hear more from management than anybody else. As the saying goes, if you're not at the table, you're on the menu. And I don't think the educators should be willing to be part of the menu.
Yeah, so I think it's really important that in everything, any school policy, a lot of work be put into talking to the teachers involved. If you're working on elementary school schedules, you want to talk to all the elementary school teachers. If there's a dispute about when high school should start, you should talk to high school teachers. But inviting union representation to weigh in is not a shortcut to that really hard work of listening to the teachers on that particular issue. I was a member of the teachers' union when I worked in the Bronx, and like many of my colleagues, I didn't always agree with what the union was fighting for. And if you talk to teachers, you'll see that that's a pattern that remains. One example is that many teachers have disagreed with the union generally desire to keep schools closed during COVID, which, as we know, greatly harms students, particularly the most vulnerable. And then, just like Lizzie, I want to go back to your first question about outreach. I think I gave you a lot of mush, I'm sorry. I just wanted to say, I do think the outreach thing is, should go back to real fundamentals and basics. One thing I've heard a ton from parents at the doors, particularly in subsidized housing, is that they don't hear how their students are doing and are not communicating enough just on absences, your behavioral issue, your child's behavior.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Joel Patterson. I'm a math teacher and a member of the CEA here. All right. We're going to switch now to a lightning round, which means we're going to ask you, I'm going to ask you a question, and then we're going to go down the line, and you can say yes or no. If you want to speak a whole paragraph about that beyond yes or no, please put it on your campaign Facebook page or your campaign website, you know? So, and then, a second lightning round question will come from Sarah. So this question is about the paraprofessionals who work in our schools. Will you support a starting salary of $50,000 a year for paraprofessionals? You can just...
We should have the best paid paraprofessionals.
Yes or no?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, absolutely, yes.
Yes.
I'm sorry, I don't know enough about that question to be able to answer it, so not answering.
Wait, before, sorry, La Queen, before you go, Eugenia, we'll give you one more chance if you want to give a yes or a no. Otherwise, it'll go down as a no. Okay.
La Queen?
I'm a paraprofessional myself, and I'm so, yes, I'm so thankful that the city of Cambridge just passed... Yes. I'm so thankful the city of Cambridge just passed legislation to increase...
Harding is a yes.
Yeah, okay, thank you, thank you, thank you.
It's a wild bunch. All right. This one's a yes or no. We're going to start with you, David. Will you commit to keeping all of the existing CPS schools open? Will you commit to keeping all of the existing CPS schools open?
There's no plan to close any, but any, so yes.
No.
Yes.
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 Yes or no?
Oh, no, I see, because I'm a corner, and no. No. Yes, and, you know, just...
No.
No. Thank you. Thank you. Yeah.
Okay.
All right, so, all right. The lightning round is over. And, but we're back to the long answers of one minute each. Okay, and so we want to ask this of the challengers. So what is one aspect of the school controlled choice policy that you would address in your tenure? And how would you address it? And we'll start with Caitlin. So what is one aspect of the school controlled choice policy you would address in your tenure? And how would you address it?
One aspect of the controlled choice policy that I would address in my tenure is thinking about the choices that we're currently offering to families and whether or not those choices are actually reflecting the needs of the community. I think this connects to the lightning round question. When I said no to closing schools, that's because school closures are traumatic for teachers, students and communities, and have long-term effects. What I am open to is thinking about the programming that is currently in schools and how we can think about adding and augmenting programs to schools so that we are actually offering choice. I think the current school choice program was meant to be a path to equity, and we have found that that has not been the case. And so we absolutely need to revise that. I think we need a wholesale audit of the controlled choice problem, controlled choice program, and also we need to pilot some other choices before we commit to fully changing what we're doing as a district.
I think a big part of the problem with controlled choice right now is community buy-in. There are legitimately long blog posts around this community on how to game the system to get the school that you want for your kid. I know people who joined the lottery with plans to leave the city or to leave the public school system if they didn't get the school that they wanted. So we have this grand idea, the controlled choice is going to get us equity, but we haven't fully invested in communicating that message to everybody. That is a huge part of it for me. I think another part of that is the transfer system. I think a lot of people know people who've done hardship transfers, and I would put big air quotes around hardship. And so I think that if we're going to have a system like this, we need to go full-throated. We need to communicate to people the value of it, and we need to stop allowing people to play around with it and move to the school that works best for them.
I agree with Caitlin, you just asked. I think we need to rigorously enforce high-needs balancing in the lottery. I think we need to close loopholes that more privileged families are aware of, like the transfer system that allow them to get the schools of their choices. And more broadly, I think that with nine of 11 elementary schools in the district now having standardized curricula, we need to think very hard about what distinguishes schools from one another aside from proximity and start times. The former, of course, being one of the things that controlled choice was supposed to control for. So I think we need to explore, first of all, expanding teacher autonomy and consider offering additional programmings, whether that's project-based learning or STEM or additional arts programmings. I think we should consider having sister schools across the district so that if you happen to be in East Cambridge and you like project-based learning, you shouldn't have to send your kid all the way to Grammer Parks to get it.
As other people have mentioned, I think that one of the things that should be done is an audit of controlled choice and to ask, why are parents making the choices that they do? Is it the, you know, are they drawn to an immersion program, a Montessori program? And to find out, perhaps maybe those types of programs should be expanded. And I think something else that I'm curious about is there are parents who choose never to go into the system at all, parents who go into the private schools and into the charter schools. And to find out why they're doing that, what is the draw to those schools? And to see what can, if they can be encouraged to come back into the public schools, I think would be a good thing.
So building on a lot of what folks have already said here, the current controlled choice system is not working to achieve the goal of creating balanced school populations while also preserving a family's desire to have some choice about the kind of school that they send their kid to. It's not currently working, and I think that the programming issue that others have brought up is a really key issue here. The most highly subscribed elementary schools right now are the schools that are practicing truly engaged and inquiry-based learning practices, Montessori, project-based learning. But these programs have been under threat for the past several years, and that has been accelerated in recent years. I'm really committed to standing up for engaged teaching and learning, inquiry-based teaching and learning, and bringing these kinds of practices to all of our schools in addition to embracing a more of a community-school model so that people want to go to their neighborhood school if that's their choice and that they aren't missing out on resources because their school is not being funded as well as the school across town.
I think this has to do a lot with the question about who, what parents have influence and who gets sidelined. I think I agree with what people have said about conducting disparity analyses and equity analyses of schools and remedying that with fresh-term priority for marginalized groups in the lottery. I think there also needs to be know-your-rights, popular education sorts of trainings for lower-income families who are not as knowledgeable about the system, helping them navigate the IEP process and other things like that in multilingual sorts of processes as well. And I really believe in tying these findings about equity to mandates, principal evaluations at all schools partially based on attracting and retaining a diversity of families, integration incentives, additional funding for schools that enroll more than 25% of students from low-income neighborhoods so that it isn't, doesn't create the segregated system we have now.
Currently, the controlled choice, it's not working. Not just, sometimes they say it's lottery, but we don't know how it is chosen. And secondly, they actually put some criteria there to get points. So this is a system that we need to reevaluate to make it completely fair. And we also need to make our schools unique and great, every school. So how can we do that? Right now, the teachers are overburdened with so many changes of policies. So first, we need to speak with every school, every school community, what problems they are facing and what exactly they want. And we see how we can improve and how we can address their needs. And secondly, we need to talk to the whole city community, what people in this city, including those who are not attending the public schools, what they are hoping to get from public schools, what they want to see in improvement, and combining all the inputs from the majority, hopefully, and we can come up with better ideas. And so that we can make every school unique instead of certain schools are better choice for some families and avoiding some of, some other schools who don't seem to be unique or not so good. Actually, all schools are good, and we can make them unique and good.
So the controlled choice, or the choice, school choice program, was enacted 30 years ago by the school committee with the goal of racially balanced schools. And that still hasn't happened, so that goal never got met. And I wonder sometimes if that school committee 30 years ago, looking into the future, if they would have made that same choice. But it's, but it's what we have. So I think I would start with a review. I think the last review was in 2013. It's on the CPS website. It's a pretty interesting look to see what was measured. We might be measuring and looking at different things. For instance, who's choosing their neighborhood school and what the criteria are, but that's where I would begin approaching this, approaching school choice.
So I think a definition of terms here is good. Controlled choice is how people enroll into the district. Another way that we can think about this is as the lottery. Now, I'll observe that Cambridge is a city with a lot of transition and a lot of stability baked into the operating system. New people come in, come out. But one thing that's true is that people who live here for a long time are privileged with institutional knowledge of how the city works, how the lottery works, right? And that leads to people's very, very, very different experiences with enrollment in CPSD. If you come in after the lottery, there is less likelihood that you will actually get a spot in the place that you want to be, and therefore you are mandatorily assigned to a school that has less people choosing it. I think that we're still finding out some of the effects of KLO's closure. That's TBD. So we don't know everything about what's going on now with controlled choice and enrollment. But at a bare minimum, I'd have a state-of-the-schools address that provides a snapshot of every single school. What's the enrollment? What's the waiting list? What does that look like? What's the transportation time from one point in the city to another?
Thank you.
Hi, yeah, so we all know controlled choice is faulty, but I think it's important that before we spend our time reinventing the wheel, it's we've got to start with what is the top priority here? Because this is a really complex task that comes with a lot of very hard trade-offs. And there have been at least two research papers that I know have written about our particular system. And they actually show that the unbalancing comes from assigning students, a huge part of that unbalancing comes from assigning students via waitlists and hardship transfers. So to stick to the socioeconomic balancing, we have to be willing to piss off a lot more parents than we do right now by granting. And this is an exact number, 100% of transfer requests. But finally, also echoing what people said, the most important thing we can do to keep our balancing is to stay focused on the fundamental of scaling the programs that do work and hiring great principals for every school, evaluating them rigorously and fully supporting them. I would also just want to, in the interest of candor, note that I wonder if the lightning round isn't a little bit manipulative and if that's really an honest or a transparent way of sharing candidate positions on things. So just something that I encourage CEA to think about. Thank you so much. I do live in East Cambridge, right on the border between Boston and Everett, as well as Somerville. And I was able to talk to a parent at Two Little Hours preschool, and he was very concerned that he wasn't able to use his voucher for CPSD schools. So he's actually having to pay out of pocket just for a preschool education for his child. As well as for personally for myself, back home in Texas, I had the opportunity to attend a private school education where my dad had to work two jobs just to be able to afford a private school education for both me and my younger brother. So it is a wonderful opportunity to be able to have a school choice program here in Cambridge. The parents, they do need the opportunity. They do, they do need that choice that Cambridge does have. So I do agree with it, thank you.
Thank you. So this next question will be the final question from us, and then we will hear from the audience. So before I ask the question, I'm just going to remind the audience, you can submit more questions, we're still looking some over. There are index cards at the back with pens. If you raise your hand, somebody will run them over to you, and we will try to fit in as many as we can. Again, we're ahead of schedule, I never thought I would say that. Here we are. So yeah, we'll do our best to try to get as many audience questions as possible. So this last question is only to incumbents, and the question goes as follows. Explain why you have refused to halt the failed superintendent process. Oh, I'm sorry, before, sorry, before we get started, there's a request that folks just say their name before you answer a question. It's helpful for the audience.
Hi, everybody, I'm Elizabeth Hudson. I will be the first to say that I think there are enormous problems with the superintendent search, but I also have failed, you know, I've refused to call for a halt to the search. I've refused to call for a halt to the search because we need a good leader now. We know we have challenges, and I'm not willing to soak up months to find a new interim and then two years before we have a new superintendent until we can take action on those challenges. I talked to you a little bit about having a spine. I'll tell you right now, one of the challenges is we have terrible leadership. We need somebody in the permanent seat now so that we can replace every assistant superintendent and at least a couple of our principals and do that now. Not three years from now, but right now. We also know that the funding for ICE has doubled, and there will be an ICE agent at a CPS school sometime in the next 12 months. When that happens, parents are going to be scared, scared kids will be scared, the school building staff will be scared, the principal will call the superintendent, and the superintendent will have to show up and handle that situation. We need somebody who is calm and cool and collected and can diffuse that situation appropriately. Also, the alternative might not be better. Barring a rules change, the next search will be led by the next mayor. Is there anybody running for city council and whom you have enormous, enormous faith and about whom you have excitement? Not for me. And we have two strong finalists, and I look forward to voting for one of them.
Thank you, Member Hudson, thank you.
My name is David Weinstein. I committed to selecting our next superintendent through a comprehensive nationwide search in a process that meaningfully engages with families, caregivers, teachers and students. I've kept that commitment. Though the process has suffered delays, district communication and updates have room for improvement. We've had a comprehensive, equity-aligned process that's yielded three strong candidates for superintendent. While school committee members haven't been present at every session where we're interacting with folks, we've gotten reports, there's public meetings showing that, and I've attended as many personally as I can. I, I'm excited to learn more about these finalists that we have and for our families, students and teachers to meet them and ask them questions directly. And that's all happening over the next few weeks. And ultimately, if I determine through this process that none of them is the right person at this time, I'll know, I'll not vote for any of them, and I'll advocate for a new search. But I do think that we owe it to our children to see this process through and fully evaluate the well-qualified, dedicated leaders who've been selected as finalists through a national search and a multi-step review process. And then I look forward to supporting whatever we select.
Thank you.
Yeah, so just quickly, I said before that when I didn't vote to remove the last superintendent that we might end up here, and I'm interested, quite frankly, in seeing the process play out because I do think, while I would have done some things differently, I think this might be a case of buyer's remorse as it relates to the equity process and how we kind of got to where we're at. The truth of this matter is this. One, I've hired or fired more superintendents than anybody involved. But in this case, the equity process and the mayor's office leading this has led us to a place where we do have viable candidates. I think the great quest to have someone sit in the seat that comes from this big nationwide surge in Cambridge has never really worked. The last couple of searches, the finalists could take a Charlie pass to the interview. So they were all local, came up with certain talent that just happened to be in our midst. I think ultimately, if we were to stop the process, we'd be sending a message to all those who try to undermine it that we will not consider potentially a leader that can take us in the right direction. So I do think there's a little bit of buyer's remorse. I would have done things differently, but I look forward to it. My last point is that, listen, I voted against superintendent six to one. If I don't feel that the person has the courage or the ability to lead us, they will get a no vote, and we will figure out the next superintendent some other way.
Thank you, Member Harding. We are now at the time for the highly anticipated audience questions. So I'm going to go ahead and start and, thank you. There's so many good ones. We're going to attempt to just have these for everybody. So we're going to stick to the one minute. You guys have been doing great, let's keep it up. The first question has some context, so just bear with me. The question is at the end. The rushed Algebra I for All Plan lacked educator input and was also accelerated midway through the year in 2024, 2025 school year for our seventh-grade scholars. This change did not allow our students and educators enough time to fully engage in the necessary math content to prepare them for success in Algebra I in eighth grade for the 2025, 2026 school year. Here's the question. In the future, what would you do to ensure that educator voice is valued and respected when making these types of decisions? And we can just, we can go down the line, yeah?
I've been a consistent voice and advocate for ensuring that educator voice is a part of decisions. I hope that that's seen through the results of the work that I'm involved with. And what I do think is important is that we are not only looking to our educators[1749.14] And what I do think is important is that we are not only looking to our educators to implement things that we decide we're going to do, but we really look to our educators to collaborate with us as we determine what steps we're gonna take. I think some more than others of our new curriculum rollouts really reflect that kind of process and reflect a process where even the rollout is iterative and is building in opportunities and timelines for teachers to be really putting their mark and helping us course correct as we, you know, make that kind of shift, which is something that I'm gonna be really looking to make sure that we do in this Algebra I rollout, which is, you know, really still a new implementation. It's looking different each year as we kind of get to this K-12-aligned math curriculum. The preparation that an eighth grader has next year is gonna be different than the preparation my eighth grader had coming into this year. And I think that that's really the key piece. I see teachers, and maybe this comes in part from having been a teacher, but I really see teachers as the... Oh, sorry. This is time I wasn't looking that way.
That was, that was my fault.
Ironically, with my glasses on. But anyway, I, we can continue that conversation. Thank you.
So a little bit of context. The decision to put all eighth graders in the same math class wasn't made in the last two years, it was made in 2017. We said we're gonna put everybody together, and then we're gonna up-level everybody so that that together class includes algebra. And then the leadership did shit about shit to make it happen, and it put faculty in a tough position, and it put parents in a tough position. And, you know, you get to a point where six, seven, eight years in, we haven't gotten there, and parents don't trust that we're ever going to get there. It is wrong to have kids boarding class. It is also wrong to have kids who are hopelessly behind in eighth grade classrooms right now, in seventh grade classrooms right now. We have a grade level span of seven levels of ability. That means we're always gonna be in a tough position. We didn't prepare. That was why the school committee stepped in and said, "You will do this," because sometimes you just have to set some clear boundaries. In the future, though, we should never put ourselves in that position again. We talked a little bit about the role in an earlier question of the CEA and decision-making, right? We're talking about middle school math. I'm looking at two high school math teachers, at least in this room. We should be asking them, and to my, is my understanding that we do not, what are you getting? How are students prepared? And what do you think we should be doing? And using that as our guiding star moving forward.
Thank you.
I have to say, I don't think we would be sitting at this forum hearing the questions being asked by the union if they were not questions that are poignant and relevant. So to hear a teachers' union asking, "How will teacher voices be respected and valued?" indicates that teacher voices have not been respected and valued in the way that they need to be. Educators have to have a seat at the table when policy is being created. They know how it's going to be implemented, and we will hear feedback directly from educators. I also think it's hard to sit at this table up here on the stage as an incumbent and claim that educator voice has been respected and valued when we know that it hasn't been. And that's why we need to think about new leadership that actually values the experience and expertise that our educators have so that that can be the starting point from which we start to do things like pilot programs, where we give educators mini-grants, where we have lots of opportunities as a learning environment and a learning culture to practice the types of innovative, creative, critical thinking that we wanna see in our students.
Thank you.
You gonna state your name, Madam?
Caitlin Doobie.
Caitlin Elizabeth David.
And I'm Jess. Honestly, this question kind of blows my mind. I have an eighth grader who went through the accelerated math last year, and I have a seventh grader whose sixth grade was also accelerated. I know that the tutoring that was promised by the district to sixth graders to help move them along into accelerated seventh grade and then Algebra I in eighth grade didn't materialize at a lot of schools. And I know that there are math teachers who are working so hard to bring our upper school students up to snuff. And I just think it is wild that they weren't asked how to do this. I have no answer except ask them, man! They're the ones in the school with the kids every single day. Ask them what they need, give them what they need, and get our kids through algebra.
I mean, to me, this question raises why we consistently make these decisions without educators at the table, the physical table, or vigorously speaking. We need to make these decisions with educators in the room. I mean, it was a mistake to stop offering Algebra in eighth grade, and it was a mistake to not involve educators in that decision. And it is a mistake now to implement, you know, to implement it again for all students again without involving educators in decision. So I've heard the same things that, you know, Jess just discussed from families and from educators on the doors about the challenges of implementation. But it is a choice. It is a choice that the school committee has made over and over again for 10 years to push on with policies without involving educators in the process, and it's a choice that needs to stop now.
Alex Bowers?
I think one of the things that I would love to see, or I'm curious about, is how these policies or how these decisions are actually made. Was the policy trickle-down from the administration? Did it originate in some, you know, esoteric theory that was then applied to the school system? And, I mean, I've had kids that went to pause, and one of my daughters did the bridge to algebra. The software that was used was riddled with laws within the states. They were given the wrong answers in a handful of cases to the problems they were working on. In addition, some of my daughter's classmates who attempted to do the self-study with the software flunked. They didn't make it, so they didn't go into Algebra I. What does that do to a child when they, when they think that they can't pass this test? We started my kids, they went to MLK in fifth grade, and we put them at CCSC in sixth grade. They were tested. Sorry. Story for another time.
Yeah, a lot of great... Thank you. I'm Lily. A lot of great responses so far. I wanna say two things. First of all, this is where true family engagement is really, really important between educators and families, because I think that had the district invested in developing those relationships and building trust in our teachers' union among our families, that had the union then had the voice to say, "This is not going to work. This is not going to be good for our students, and this is not good for our educators." With those relationships built with families in the district, you have a better chance at bringing the families along. So that's one thing. Secondly, CEA has to be at the table. The educators must be at the table. I don't know how many times I've been to school committee meetings where there has been discussion and deliberation among members of the school committee and administrators, and they are fumbling to answer questions that CEA leadership sitting in the room could answer, but they aren't at the table, and we're wasting time doing this.
Thank you, Lily.
Hi, I'm Louisa. I agree with what a lot of folks have said about seeking feedback, of course, from educators. I think another key is iterative. I believe that top-performing systems prioritize teacher collaboration and iterative improvement over top-down mandates. So really having implementation that takes time, that you're checking in with teachers throughout the process at various points, piloting the curriculum with educators gathering feedback, providing training, refining based on data, expand training and allocate planning time, and then a full rollout with ongoing coaching and evaluation. So as with anything involving educators in policy decisions, it needs to be a continuous iterative give-and-take process.
Judgingly, can't emphasize enough that whatever decisions to be made for our children, it needs to be engagement between the caregivers and the teachers, driven by the teachers. That includes what subject we want to introduce. So it's probably not about algebra. If advanced learners want to have more, more math, they can have like a package or something, but that needs to be discussed between the families, the students, and the teachers. So the teachers need to have the enough, we wanna make sure the teachers have enough resources. And if this is a good decision, whether we are really putting them in the right direction for our students. And we need to have, maybe we started with pilot program and ongoing evaluation and feedback and PD training. Okay.
I'm Jane Hershey. So I think I'm gonna follow along on the trend here and say, yes, educators' voices, teachers' voices need to be involved in making curriculum change and curriculum implementation. And I would just add to look that a school committee should be looking really carefully at how, in what ways are you getting information from teachers beyond simply a survey or I don't know how that information's gathered? Are teachers involved in helping to select the curriculum? Are they invited to be looking at how it's implemented in different districts as part of that decision-making? So I would just take it down to that slightly deeper level. The other point that comes up for me is what's involved in changing a curriculum, even when curriculum needs to be changed? How many years does it take for a teacher to learn a new curriculum? What's involved there? I think our school committee would be improved by taking into consideration how much that, how long that process is.
Thank you.
Annie Coburn. I think that I am generally more interested in solving the future problems rather than castigating the past, because of course, kids and teachers need to be at the table. Of course, caregivers need to be at the table as well. I think that, yes, there should be algebra in eighth grade. Yes, absolutely, teachers should be at the table. That isn't a question. The question is, how early should the preparation for algebra start? It should start much earlier than sixth grade. This should be built into our pipeline. This should be a part of our expectations for everybody much, much, much sooner than it is now, and it should be acted upon like a Band-Aid. This is what we have seen with the leadership vacuum. Thank you.
I'm Eugenia Schraha, and that rhymes with algebra. So, it's on my T-shirt. Anyway. I think it's really important to just talk about school policies generally. The most important thing about any school policy is that must put student learning first. The second most important thing is that you have to meaningfully engage with the teachers to understand their objections, to see where you can work out compromises, and because they're the ones doing the work, so if you don't do that, they're not gonna really implement it with verve. But I also think it's really important to go over a few quick basics of the data on math here, and one depressing statistic is that grades three through eight, only about 25% of low-income learners meet or exceed math expectations. So that's where the scandal really is. And in her end-of-year presentation, the head of math showed that the middle school learners are only about 50% up to grade level. So putting everybody in this accelerated class by definition means that at least 50% of the class is gonna be completely lost and demoralized in this eighth-grade algebra class. Oh.
Thank you.
All right.
Hello, my name is Laquyn Battle. Excuse me, you're gonna have to forgive me. I do agree with family engagement, but I do disagree with the curriculum that algebra should be in an eighth-grade curriculum. I'm a product of the Boys and Girls Club. I'm a product of Girl Scouts. I'm a product of all these after-school programs that encourage youth, as well as those who come from diverse backgrounds, whether, you know, multilingual, different languages, low income. And the students want to learn. We want to succeed. We want to grow. We wanna learn math. We wanna learn science. I've even worked in ISD at Franklin Elementary School, and the kids, they wanna learn. They wanna improve. They're tired of the basic mathematical skills. So they do wanna learn. Thank you.
Richard Harding helped to give some context of how we got here. So, and first of all, just to be clear, all great public school systems offer algebra as a pathway by and before the eighth grade. That's a fact. So how we got here was sometime in 2000-whatever, let's say 10 or in that area, there was a curriculum review, which happens every 10 years. This math curriculum review was led by myself and I believe Patty Nolan with the chairs. We had all of the experts locally, Bob Moses included, who then concluded that Cambridge needed to do a better job consistently of delivering algebra to all students in all schools. That's how we got here. In 2010 or '11 or maybe '13, I sponsored a motion to make sure that all kids would have algebra by and before the eighth grade. I come back to the school committee a couple of years ago, and nothing has happened in that vein. So let's not act as if algebra's a new thing. Let's not act as if it's not something that we need to do. We committed to having a professional development so that all teachers would be able to teach algebra in all schools. It did not happen. That's where we should focus. But this algebra conversation has been happening formally for at least 15 years. We are way behind. We need to get there.
Thank you. We're gonna try to, like I said, we're gonna try to fit as many questions as possible. I'm just gonna make a note, I wanna give a shout-out to all the students who are here this evening. And to the educators who encourage them to come out. And there seems to be a hot-button question from the students for you all, because it came up multiple times. So I'm gonna throw it out there, and we don't have to go down the line. It's, if you wanna answer it, great. If not, then we'll move on to the next question. How would you ensure that student input impacts district policies? And I have a note for you all. Please answer without pandering. Please answer without pandering. How would you ensure that student input impacts district policies? And there was a separate, not on this card, somebody specifically referred to the yonder pouches.
This is Annie Coburn. Look, when we figure out how student impact, how student input impacts the educational policy in this district, could you let us know how we can get the caregiver input to also impact district policy? Because I think that we're having a both-and here moment. We need, the school committee needs, the culture of this district needs, to take all caregiver feedback appropriately into account and to establish the boundaries by which they will or will not take that feedback into account. I've heard so many times from so many people, "Well, I spent some time on a committee and I gave my input and nothing happened." That has to change.
Laquyn?
I just wanna give a shout-out to Cambridge's Latin Student Government here tonight. I see a couple of you guys in the back. Student government, we definitely need to encourage more student government. We definitely need to encourage more student clubs. We definitely need to encourage more young guys out there to have meetings, to have input, to have parents, parent teacher associations to come out here, as well as to continue to say, "We, guys, we have a say-so, and we wanna learn. We wanna know what's going on in our, in our community." And then I'm very happy that, please, again, I would encourage you guys to come to these meetings, to come to the school board meeting. Last week, we only had five to seven people come to the school board meeting. So please, please encourage you all to come to the school board meetings. Thank you.
I would just say one thing. This school committee, and I've been on the school committee a while when I came back, I think that this school committee, to give them credit, we give enormous, enormous respect to the representatives that you send. Those young students who are bright, they are part of our conversations in a real way. We do not discount at all the fact that they're students when we're deliberating important policy matters. If you watch the tape, if you listen to the input that they give, they've often have changed the trajectory of different legislation at the school committee level. I would just simply say that while we are not perfect, we absolutely respect the representatives that you send to us to sit on as the student school committee members in every aspect of what we do.
So I said before that the person you most wanna talk to about school policy is the current students we have, but older, looking back and telling us yes or no, "That school served me well. That policy served me well." And so, I'm so sorry, students, but the data on keeping cell phones out of the classroom is super, super strong. And I'm sorry to be a mom, but I am one. And I'm just gonna tell you, you will be doing materially better after you graduate if you get a better education. You'll get a better job. It is for your own good, and let's talk in a few years, and then you can disagree with me, then it'll be more impressive. Finally, I just wanted to say on the algebra stuff, I didn't finish my quick point, which is what we need to do with any kind of learning, and algebra is a perfect example, is make sure that the optics of equity comes second and that student learning is prioritized with those 50% of kids who are gonna be lost. That's not equity. That is the opposite of equity.
Thank you. Lily?
So there's more we can do with the student representatives that are at our school committee meetings. They can actually vote, their non-binding votes, but that's powerful. And if I'm elected, I will fight to make sure that our student representatives are allowed to vote so that they can really show where they stand on the policies that we're passing. Furthermore, I agree with Laquyn that student government, fifth-grade councils, bringing student representatives onto our school councils, which need a lot of work. Current school committee members have claimed that they have worked to improve those as sites of shared governance. Well, we're really far from reaching that goal, and students aren't even part of the conversation. So we need to bring students into these forms of, areas of shared governance, and we need to actually commit to empowering the different voices that come to these tables, because right now, it remains a very top-down approach.
So I agree. I mean, I think we have CRLS representatives on the school committee right now, and, you know, to Richard's point, they should be. know, to Richard's point, they should be heard as well as seen, and they should have a voice. I do want to point out that we have a whole lot of other schools in the district, and we just finished talking about algebra implementation and the bumps in the road there. We should be engaging with students at upper schools too, and hearing what their experiences are like. So again, this goes back to not just, you know, making space for, you know, at-school committee meetings for two CRLS students who represent their community, but going out and engaging all the other communities of students in the district.
I completely agree with that. And I also think that the, oh, sorry, Jess, Jess Getz. My name's Jess Getz. I think that the student school committee members have been greatly respected, and I think it's a wonderful addition to school committee meetings. I'd like to see younger students included in that. You know, when they're in fifth grade, they have a really great curriculum about their Bill of Rights, so they know what their rights are. And so they should be at the table, and they should be allowed to present and vote, even in a non-binding way. I think student government programs, I agree. There are some schools that have them and some that don't. And so if you're a school that has them, maybe we can figure out how to share out your knowledge and what you've learned to other schools. I will also say, go into mom mode like Eugenia for a second about the phones, just that as a mom who gets called out a lot about my own phone use, I wonder if when we're implementing these younger yonder pouches in the high school, if we want to make sure that the adults are also right on par with the kids. Promise it's not pandering.
I love this question because it touches on two of my areas of passion and expertise, youth leadership and project-based learning. As someone who has regularly worked with young people in Cambridge, I've started two no-cost youth leadership programs that have expanded every year. This is something that is really important if we want to have an organization and a culture that grows and expands different definitions of leadership. We have to be centering youth, and we also have to cultivate pathways and programs for young people to become leaders. So that can look like project-based learning. That's a perfect opportunity to throw out a question like, "How would you solve the problem of cellphone use at the high school?" And see what students come up with. So it's really about democratizing who has power, sharing power, thinking about leadership. And we've heard a lot of talk about algebra, which is definitely important, but we also need to be thinking about our civics instruction and our social studies programs so that we can raise a generation of leaders who will one day be sitting up on this stage. Kaitlyn Dubey.
Hi, I'm Elizabeth Hudson. If you cannot pull yourself away from your phone for seven hours during the school day, you will not be as successful as you endeavored to be after you graduate. Period, full stop, end of sentence. With that said, we learn a lot from the student school committee members, as many people have said, but not nearly as much as we could, right? You know, we ask them to give a report for anybody who's been to a school committee meeting. We ask them to give a report. You know, they talk about various things, and we very rarely then re-engage them in the conversation. At the last school committee meeting, yeah, we talked about the new attendance policy. I feel about attendance the way I feel about cell phones. We need it. Or, you know, we need it, we don't need cell phones. But we talked about the attendance policy, and the students raised their hand, and they said, "I actually don't know what the policy is. Nobody's communicated it to me." Like, that's a really important detail. We talk at 100,000 feet, and I love doing that, right? But what's much more interesting is when people say, "I don't know what the policy is. Do I have to come? Do I not have to come? How does it impact my grade?" And if students know, they don't know, then faculty probably don't know. As we're talking about math, at the math forum in the last election cycle, students did come, and it was great, because they sat there and they said, "I am bored. I am bored, and I am tired, and somebody told me to play Sudoku." And that's insane. That was really helpful. If you ask them about a lot of our initiatives today, they laugh. They laugh because it's silly. Kids are smart. They know when we're trying to paper over real differences at the high school that we are responsible for, because we didn't handle them at the elementary school and middle school. We kept promoting kids and promoting kids that hadn't yet mastered the material. So we need to listen to kids, and we need to ask them questions, but those questions need to be simple and concrete.
Hi, I'm still David Weinstein. Late-breaking news, that in 2021, when I was also on the subcommittee as a committee with leadership from then-Vice Chair Bowman and Mayor Siddiqui, and from our student members Killian and Vera DeGraff, we actually did make a policy change to have non-binding votes by our student school committee members on certain measures. And actually, the mayor, the current mayor, Simmons and I both independently this week, with our new members coming on board, were asking, "What happened?" And so we have a motion that will be discussed at our next school meeting to reinstate that. I think it just got lost in the translation as we had new student members come on board. But in all my time in the school committee, this has been super important to me. I've reached out to students, and I've listened to students, whether it's around menstrual equity, reading a register forum article that showed that our policy that I boasted about was not in practice, what it should be. And then I brought in a revised, updated policy, whether it's our response to bias-related incidents, which I also updated, whether it's also about our handling of misogyny and gender-based violence. I attended the walkout. I worked to support work of the Title IX Orellia Advocates, and to update our hate and bias-related incident policy and institutionalize our consent education program.
Thank you.
Judgingly, what about changing the format of school committee meeting? Where makes it real meeting? And we can invite all grades students in the high school to come and speak, not just the student representative, and make real discussion and decision together. That will build the trust and partnership. And also, some informal bubble tea pizza session with the school committee member and talk about how you break the rules with yonder pouch, and some other screen time that maybe it's not so good for us during school time. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to move us to one final question, and then we will have closing statements. And again, answer if you're interested in answering. How will you work to make teaching and working as an educator in Cambridge more enjoyable and sustainable? How will you retain good teachers and support staff? And I'm just going to add one more wrinkle, in particular educators of color. Yes, sorry. Let me repeat, sorry. Let me repeat the question one more time. How will you work to make teaching and working as an educator in Cambridge more enjoyable and sustainable? How will you help retain good teachers and support staff, and in particular educators of color?
Well, a very basic is making sure that we consistently have contracts that have, you know, competitive pay and benefits. But beyond that, I think job-like groups for educators where there's real meaningful time for professional development that's led by our own educators and is following our educators' requests and needs. That's what I experienced as most valuable when I was a teacher. In terms of retaining teachers of color, part of that is making sure that not only are we, which we have been doing, doing a better job of recruiting more broadly, and also developing pipelines so that teachers and paraprofessionals and others within our district can be prepared to and become teachers. But we also need to make sure that we don't inadvertently, but still, put everything, the burden of everything that intersects with race, on our teachers of color as their responsibility to take care of. They're interdependent, and we need to do this work together. So that's part of the picture. It's not just getting people here, but making sure this is really a place that you can grow and thrive, take risks, have peer mentorship, and professional development that's meaningful to advance your practice, which is what I think teachers are really looking to do, care for kids and advance their practice.
Thank you. Laquyn?
Thank you so much. Again, I thank you. I'm a person of color. As you know, the city of Cambridge is very diverse. It has over 20 to 50 to 100 languages just in this city. So it's more than just black, white, Hispanic, Asian. It's, I mean, different religions, different cultures, people from all around the world. So you'd be surprised, just by walking down the street, who you meet and who you can talk to. So I think embracing the CPSD needs to embrace people from different cultures. I mean, they need to look at people from different countries. They need to look at people from different educational structures. You'd be surprised how many people have PhDs just from all around the world. So we also need to incorporate that into the school, the school HR system as well. And I've also tried to apply with CPSD online, but I did face a little bit of a struggle because I do have a bachelor's degree. But I do agree that we need to incorporate people of all different educational structures. Thank you.
Louisa, and then I think Arjun, and then Annie. And we do have to, for sake of time, we can only take about five more people. So I think I just named three or four. I saw Hudson first. Louisa?
Hi, I'm Louisa. I believe that educators need to be able to evaluate their administrators. I believe that DEI efforts need to include politicization. Often, we end up elevating a sort of professional class diversity that's silent on issues like union democracy, defunding police in schools, and wealth redistribution. And often, working-class educators of colors who organize around these material conditions are marginalized and even disciplined, not elevated. So I believe that, yeah, tying administrative power to retention, principal contracts must be partially based on their proven ability to retain educators of color and to create a climate where racial and economic justice advocacy is protected, not punished.
Thank you. Zhijing was next, no, sorry, Arjun was next, then Zhijing, then Annie, and then Hudson.
Hi. I'm Arjun Jaymar. Sounds like Argentina. It's not on YouTube. Educator working conditions are senior working conditions. And we need to respect educators as professionals and understand that if we've taken better salaries, we do not pay attention to educators' working conditions. They are professionals, and they will make the decision to go somewhere else where their labor and their humanity is done. So I think the first step is listening to educators about their working conditions and taking their complaints, taking their concerns seriously. I completely agree with Louisa. We need 360-degree value of administrators, 360-degree reviews of administrators, so that we can tell if there are problems with administration at a particular school or among teachers of color at a particular school. Those issues can be addressed, and they can be addressed as early as possible before we start the process.
So first of all, we need to empower our teachers. What does that mean? That means to respect and appreciate their value, their contribution. And that includes to give them the right to speak whatever they think there is an issue, not silencing them. And also, that will help to cultivate a sense of belonging that they are not just doing the job, but they are belonging to the schools, and they want this school to be well. And also, we can have programs with institution in training more and recruiting more colored educators. And of course, from top down, the entire district needs to truly, genuinely practice culturally inclusive inclusion, not just look good on paper. Thank you.
I completely agree, oh, sorry. This is Annie Coburn. I completely agree with the evaluation, 360 evaluation of teachers of, who have been requesting the feedback, of administrators, specifically principals, as well as district administrators of the superintendent of the school committee. This is a holistic system. Everybody needs to be able to be valued and for it to work. I would say that teacher burnout is hugely part of being overburdened, underappreciated, and not feeling like their voices are heard. I think that if we are going to actually say, okay, well, if the principals are some of the most important people in the district, some of the most important employees in the district, can we ask about things like, is there an active student council? Is the principal using the school improvement plan as a guide for priorities? Are we creating metrics that make sense based on each school? How, and how do they use their teachers' time? Can the teachers think?
Thank you, Annie. Thank you. And then member Hudson, and then we will move on to closing remarks.
First and foremost, pay. I know we've talked about a lot of other things, but this is a foundational piece that's important for any job. People want dollars, not donuts and professional appreciation days. And to that, you know, on that point, I come back to everybody knowing the details of how to make that happen. Platitudes are easy, but they're pablum. You have to know the details in order to be able to make that happen. Also, when we talk about curricula, we talk about curricula a lot. We talk about pre-break curricula. We talk about them being, you know, rolled out very quickly. You know, these are the types of things that we need not to do. Our problem has never been, our problem has never been the faculty. By and large, our problem has never been the students. You know, there are lots of students without stressors outside of school, but the Benjamin Banerker has those same students, and they do a great job with it. It's execution. We put our faculty in a terrible position. We just talked about math, right? That wasn't a faculty problem. That was an administrative and a leadership problem that put us in that position. You put both parents and faculty in a tough spot. To that point, we talked about admin evaluations. I actually brought them. We have two different admin evaluations, the building admin evaluations and the district admin evaluations. Last year, we did 47% of our teachers. This year, we evaluated 95% of our teachers.
Thank you, member Hudson.
But less than half of our admins. This is something that we really need to be focused on and paying attention to.
Thanks. Before we go to closing remarks, I just want to say a few words. So again, thank you for everybody who came out tonight. Thank you to the candidates for participating. I just want to share a couple notes about what the endorsement process of the union is. So what you can expect, or what will take place next, is that tomorrow, the candidate endorsement committee of the CEA will meet. We will review the performances here at this forum, as well as questionnaires that some of the candidates returned. We will use that to make recommendations to the broader executive board of the union, and they will make a final decision about who to endorse. That will come out next week. So stay tuned for that. I also just want to remind people to vote in November. And also remember that there's early voting, which is even better, because it's more convenient. And there was one other, oh, and I want to thank CCTV for being here to record this for the community. So, on that note, we will start with opening remarks, and I will kick it to, what did I say? We're going to do it all over again, yeah. That was just a practice round, and I hope you guys have nothing to do for the next two hours. No, please, start talking.
So, thank you to the CEA from a former AFT-affiliated teacher union member. One thing I want to say about my approach in general is that I really believe one can't assume. By digging in, by showing up, by shutting up, I often hear different perspectives on issues that some consider settled. And just to mention, with student engagement with the school climate subcommittee, I had the chance to visit every middle school this year, observe classes, talk with teachers, meet with student focus groups. It was incredibly valuable. Some of what I've been able to help achieve for Universal Preschool, sponsored our new advanced learning policy. Our equity goals demand it's not that these opportunities are not limited to those who advocate for themselves or pay for opportunities at a school. Launching the success planning system I've been advocating for, so we effectively and efficiently use our wealth of resources. I'm holding our district leadership accountable for robust family engagement and transparent school improvement plans. I will safeguard our children from external threats. I will not agree to compromise our principles or policies for funding, and I will always stand in defense of and in solidarity with our trans and gender non-conforming students, our black and brown students, our immigrant and refugee students, and all of our students. So I ask you to vote, David, number one. We're going to have a new superintendent, and I believe that my experience as a teacher, a parent, and a school committee member will be valuable in that transition.
Thank you, member Weinstein.
And if I don't, and so anyway, vote, David, number one, even if I don't rhyme with anything educational, and call me before, during, or after this election.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Elizabeth, Elizabeth again. Thank everybody for coming. Thank you, everybody, for coming, and the CEA for hosting. My bottom line is that there are no deliverables without details. Nice words are lovely, but they don't get the job done. On the budget, know the details. That is literally the job. Yes, we are underleveled by 2%. No, our taxes are not higher than Boston. On the lottery, again, know the details. That's the job. Read the policy. 2013 was not the last review. There have been 22 changes. The policy's 40 years old. There have been 22 changes since, and it's technically been reviewed at each point in time. I called the district to ask if anybody requested a copy of each of these amendments. Nobody has. Know what you're talking about, or you won't make any changes happen. On parapay, what are you going to give up to make 50K happen? For every, you know, for every paraprofessional, that's $2.7 million. That plus all the other stuff we're talking about, like electric buses and additional vehicles on bus routes, that is more than a 12% raise in the budget, which is more than we've ever gotten before. So either have a plan for lobbying city council for more, or talk about what your strict priority order is. On the search, the search firm is a joke. The communications are terrible. I'll be the first to say that I'm like 30 emails into the, into reaching out to the committee leadership this summer, and I've gotten zero responses. But replace school committee members. We have two good people in the pool, and I look forward to voting for one of them. And finally, I just want to say, I just want to compliment a few of the, I've been talking a lot about doing the work, Eugenia and, and Richard Harding is brave. He'll say whatever he needs, even if you don't agree with him. Eugenia and Jess, they've all done a ton of work, and I really want to recognize them for that.
Thank you.
I think we've heard tonight about a lot of struggles, a lot of places where we can improve, and we definitely need to do that in any organization that involves young people, improve, and we definitely need to do that in any organization that involves young people, but particularly our schools and this district in particular. We, as adults, need to be able to convene and collaborate in the best interests of our students. That is our number one priority. I think framing a conversation around what our schools could actually be, given the incredible resources we have in this room and the financial resources that we have, is a way to shape policy for the future instead of fear-mongering, thinking about deficit and scarcity thinking. These are not cultural mindsets that are going to help us shift the future that we know that our children need and deserve. And I'm excited to share more about the amazing things that we can do together throughout this campaign process, and I appreciate the opportunity to share some of my thinking tonight.
Thank you.
I am running a campaign that is focused on process because I think it is, I'm allergic to platitudes as well. I think it's really nice to have good ideas, but if we don't know how to do them, then nothing happens, and we're here again in two years. So I am advocating that the way the school committee works is that it becomes more accessible, more accountable, more responsive, and more transparent, and in more alignment with the schools, which means having a genuine curiosity about what is going on in our schools. And because I believe in concrete things, here are some examples of things that I would like the school committee to achieve. I'd like an improved school committee website where the community can actually see what the school committee is working on before fully-fledged resolutions come to the table. I'd like a statement of expectations for how quickly we need to respond to emails, texts, and phone calls. I'd like a non-voting CEA member at the table. And I'd like an upper school summit so we can sit down and see what's going on with our upper schools and improve the situation. Process matters because there is no equity without access.
Thank you.
Hi, Arjun D. Mar. Again, it sounded like I was leaving. I want you to think back to what you heard from the incumbents regarding the super-dominant search. Yeah. The process, the search firm has been a joke, you know? I'm not happy with the process. The process hasn't been great. But we have two great candidates. We have three candidates. One is, as I, maybe I'm wrong with that, but one has been a classroom teacher. Two of the finalists have been principals, none have been firm in super. First of all, what does that tell you about how the incumbents actually value educator expertise and experience? Second, is this the best we can do? We talk about high standards with students, we talk about high standards with teachers. Well, where's the high standards for our district-wide leadership? So I would just say this, if you listen to what the incumbent said about the super-dominant search, and you were sold, you were persuaded, I'm not your candidate. But if you still have questions, you should vote for me or one of the 12 other challengers that we have, which I think speaks the desire of the candidates.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for...
I, I think that when, when you think about who you're going to vote for, I think that it really does go beyond one candidate because you have, you're going to elect six representatives, and only four of them are needed to change the course of the decisions of the school committee. So I don't think it's that you need to look at just an individual, but how people are going to work together. You know, who has curiosity, who is willing to collaborate, willing to talk to anyone about anything, and take seriously the ideas that, that people have. Not all of them may be realistic, but there may be a grain of something in an idea that could radically change things. I think that candidates who ask why or why not are the people that you should vote for.
Hi, everyone. I'm Lilly Hapsted. Thanks again for being here tonight, and thanks to CEA for hosting. I identify as a teacher scholar, which means in higher ed spaces that I, that is a way of indicating that I think my teaching work, the work I do in the classroom, is just as valuable, just as important as my scholarly output, the scholarship, my research, my writing. And I make this explicit point about who I am as a college educator and scholar because teaching at all levels is a really disrespected profession right now, K through 16. And we need to restore public faith in our schools, and we will not do that if we do not invest in our educators and show them the respect that they deserve. I was a little taken aback by some of the disrespect I heard tonight, and I really want to come back to the statement I said earlier, that I'm running for school committee and would like your first, your number one vote because I would really like for us to recommit to the human work that is teaching and learning.
Thank you, Lilly.
That's at the center of this organization that we've lost sight of.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Louisa. I just want to drive home the point that advocating for equitable distribution of resources is not a platitude, and it is data-driven. I believe Cambridge does have the money, and it is a choice of how it is being spent. There is no reason why any educator is not making a living wage in the city and not able to afford to live here. And there's no reason why our low-income students are in crisis. I was working at a school where we lived the crisis day in and day out, and that is completely unnecessary. It's a political choice. And I feel that, I agree with Arjun, you should really consider the challengers. We really, a lot of people here expressed that we want to go to the community and really hear from people. Thank you.
Judging Lee. Schools succeed when families and educators collaborate. Standards provide guidance, but teachers know their students best. I'm running because I've experienced challenges families faced firsthand, and I believe schools can work better for every child. Supporting teachers who spend eight hours a day shaping our kids' learning is how we make that happen. I will prioritize fairness and respect, listening to teachers' perspective first. Supporting teachers and caregivers is essential, are essential because when they thrive, students thrive too. So we need good school committee candidate, school committee member who are approachable, who truly understand the problems and want to listen and engage everyone, and come up with a joint partnership to make the decisions together. And we make the process accountable and transparent. And this is the type of school committee member we should be looking for. Thank you.
I'm Jane Hershey, and I come to this race with three lens that I think are important. One is the parent lens of children having been through Cambridge Public Schools. One is a nonprofit director lens, somebody who works with people, who works with strategic planning and implementation, and who works with resources. And third is the founder and director of a very specific nonprofit, starting City Sprouts, doing something that seemed impossible but was actually made possible through collaborations with hundreds of teachers, classroom teachers, pares, teachers who really shaped that program and made it what it was. It seems a miracle that it happened, and it only happened with teachers. I've talked to over 4,000 people so far, and I'm, I, I want to win. I ask for your number one vote. And partly, I want to win because I have a vision for what this school committee could be, one that works proactively together to make our schools better.
Thank you, Jane.
You're welcome.
Hi, still Annie Coburn. I'm running for school committee because I know that who is elected to this body deeply impacts the kids of this district, of this district, and how they experience their most formative years. Right now, we are in a transformative national time. Cambridge is a sanctuary city whose commercial tax base is biotech and universities. It's very likely that the city's budget will shrink in response to the federal government's choices to cut NIH, NSF funding, vaccine research restrictions, et cetera. Their attempts to restrict Department of Transportation funds, if the city doesn't bound to their demands regarding immigration, says to me that we have to design our systems with the most needed, we must design our system so that our high-need students, students on IEPs from low-income backgrounds and English-language learners face the lowest barriers to the highest-quality education and that they can learn in safety. We have to do this with our entire community. And right now, we don't have good mechanisms in place to ensure that public feedback. Please vote for me.
Thank you.
I really hope to win, to earn your trust.
Hi, as a former teacher, I have to address the burnout issue. I just want to really quickly say that when I talk to teachers, I'm struck by the fact that nobody ever mentions the challenges of teaching kids, the challenges of kid behavior. That never comes up as an issue that teachers are facing, even though those are really real. They relish the challenge, the real challenges of teaching, but what I do hear is nobody listens to us. And then when you compare that with the panorama, teacher survey data that showed that feedback and coaching was really the lowest across the board, I think it's very important that we put a more focus on working, without taking the shortcut of using union leaders, but working with the actual teachers who are affected by any policy to make sure that that policy will work and is as good as possible. All right. I'm Eugenia Schraha. I'm a former public high school teacher. I taught in the Bronx. I've got two kids in the system. I have a successful track record. I advocated for 170 extra after-school seats in 2023. I've brought media coverage to school issues. We're on my newsletter. You can find it, voteugenia.com. The problem with our schools is that the optics of equity keep winning over putting student learning first. And as I said, 75% of low-income students are not at grade level.
Thank you.
All students should be challenged in class, and kids who aren't up to grade level deserve all the support they need to get there.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Laquan Battle. Again, thank you for, for everybody coming out tonight. Again, I want to thank CEA, and I want to thank the safety and the protection for all the candidates tonight. Unfortunately, interim superintendent Mr. Murphy is not here tonight, which is surprising me as well as a lot of people. He would hear a lot of good feedback about what's going on with CPSD. I'm a product of a lot of good, good programs that have helped low-income and minority students, Black Lives Matter, Boys and Girls Club, Student Power Achievement, Upward Bound, a lot of good programs that have helped low-income person, people like myself succeed. I should not be the only person here on the floor. In fact, there are other candidates that are not here tonight. I would encourage you guys to continue to support, to uplift the teachers right now that are struggling right now. We need to continue to support paraprofessionals. We need to, like the city of, the Cambridge City Council has just now enacted legislation to enforce, to increase the funding for paraprofessionals in the school districts. So again, thank you so much for being here out tonight. I'm on all social media platforms, Black Lives Matter. God bless you all.
Thank you.
How much time do we have, Mr. Lewis?
I'm sorry?
It's time?
One minute.
I'm a little sub, but let me just say this to you. And I'm not as nice as I used to be, and I'm sorry, I'm going to just say that now. But this is the reality of Richard Harding as a school committee member. I want you to check the scoreboard. Every issue that's been important to you, every single one, I was on your side. You wanted pares. I worked with my colleague Elizabeth Hudson. We thought about it. We said we should sponsor this to have pares, right? That's what happened. The teachers were asking for proper evaluations and on-time evaluations. I sponsored that motion to force the school committee to be held accountable for something that they were supposed to do. I was with you there. Someone asked a question about the budget earlier. The budget represents your values. It didn't represent mine. And so I voted against that, once again, with my colleague Elizabeth Hudson. The reality of this is that I'm asking for your vote because I've been consistent, I've stood with you, even though sometimes the relationship's been rocky. If you think about some of the most important issues that you've had as a union or that teachers and students have had, I've been consistently with you on those issues. So that's why I ask for your vote to continue that leadership. This is not about who feels good, who has the best idea. This is about people that deliver on what they say they're going to deliver on and that they stand on business. The school committee is a place where you need to know how to run things. In this case, it's at schools, and I understand that. And I'm looking forward to working with the other folks that are elected to do that.
Thank you, Member Hudson. Thank you. Thank you. Only five minutes over. Pretty good. Thank you for being here. Thank you, the candidates. Have a great evening. If you didn't get to sign in when you came in through, please do so now. Grab some swag. Vote.